Good afternoon. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the June 11th, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting to order. Before we begin our meeting today, I would like to introduce our special guest, Superintendent Frederick Hyde. Would you please stand?[297.12][297.12](APPLAUSE). He is currently in transition with Mrs. Byrd through the end of June and will take office officially on July the 1st. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Hyde to Polk County Public Schools. Yay, right?[321.45][321.45](APPLAUSE). Superintendent Hyde, we would like to present you with a few welcoming gifts to get you started in your new role. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Steve Cochran, Senior Director, and Mr. Hunter Gambrell, Budget Coordinator with our Workforce and Multiple Pathways Education, who will be making our presentation today.
Yes. Mr. Hyde, we got you a few gifts. I'm sorry, my boss is coming up right now.
Here we go.[361.53][361.53](LAUGHTER). There we go.
Well, you could have done that, but we brought you a welcome to Polk County Schools Starter Pack.
Yes.
Which includes a shirt, which I've heard you might need.[380.41][380.41](LAUGHTER). So there's an umbrella in there for when we have hurricane duty and a backpack to keep all your stuff in. We welcome you to Polk County Schools and thank you for coming.
Yay. Awesome. Thank you.[399.12][399.12](APPLAUSE).
Just to explain, first and foremost, thank you very much, but to explain to the audience and those watching from home, I arrived very early this morning because my flights were delayed. My bags have yet to arrive, so hence the fact I had to make an early morning run to Kohl's to get outfitted for today's meeting. So thank you for the polo. I will definitely utilize it tomorrow because my bag will not be delivered until 10:00 PM tomorrow, so thank you.
See, we didn't even realize that you were going to need it, but those motions were already in place, so see, it worked out great. So welcome Superintendent Hyde. We're very excited and blessed to have you on board, so. Now I would like to ask Ms. Sarah Beth Reynolds if you would give our invocation, and I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Reynolds?
Lord, thank you for gathering us all here today. Watch over our actions and our words. Help us to speak with grace and kindness and to do what's best for our students and those of Polk County. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. And now I would like to ask Mr. Wilson if you'd be so kind and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The first item today is to accept the agenda. Mr. Hill, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
Madam Chair, we do have some revisions this evening.
Yes, sir.
New administrators add items. Consent Item G31, Recommendations for Administrative Instructional and Instructional Personnel Actions, Revised Attachment. Action Item H3, Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee, Add Attachment. Action Item H4, IDEA Grant Allocation, Revised Attachment. That concludes our revisions for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for June 8th, 2021 with the noted revisions. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is our special recognitions. Mr. Hill, would you please lead us through our special recognitions today?
Yes, Madam Chair. First, I would like to ask School Board Member Kay Fields to step down for special recognitions. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Steve Warner, Community Liaison Director, please come forward for the mobile food pantry recognition.
Okay, so thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight for the special recognition. I'm waiting to see if that comes up. So I know that throughout the district, we have a lot of our community partners that do wonderful things for our schools and our students and our family, but tonight I wanted to take a few moments to do a special recognition for a gentleman and an organization that has really gone above and beyond what a business partner could and should do for our district. So, you know, this person going and doing what he's doing has really been a blessing to our organization through his unselfish acts, as he graciously supports all of the things we do throughout Polk County Public Schools. So I think you all remember back in March when the pandemic hit us and we had to go on hiatus and we had to shut down and our students couldn't get to school. So, you know, through the wise approach that the Board took and that other staff members did, we created our Grab and Go Meals, our sites at our local schools. But what we found out quickly was that some of our students in some areas in the district couldn't make it to schools because they didn't have transportation to go pick up food. And one of those areas was in the Florence Villa area, and fortunately with our partner, the Public Education Partnership of Winter Haven, we actually had a site there that we could quickly mobilize and distribute food to those students that live in that area. And with the help of Jenna Kesmarski and Rob Davis, we were able to quickly mobilize those areas and start distributing food to our students. So tonight, we're going to recognize Mr. Bobby Williams with Freedom Tour, but first, we really want to talk to you about some of the things that we've done and how Bobby has really stepped up to take care of our students. As we began to distribute the food to our students, remember, our students could come and get a bag that had two or three days worth of food in it, but what we found, especially in the Florence Villa area, was that our families and our grandmas and the grandpas and parents were asking for food also. Well, through the grant that we had through the district, we could not supply that food to families. So quickly, between Pep and some other folks in the community, we quickly said, how can we distribute food as we're doing the Grab and Go Bags to our families at the same time? So that is when we first met Mr. Williams and his group, the Freedom Tour, over in Lake Wales. We began to supplement the Grab and Go Bags that we were giving to our students, and this happened all the way through spring and then all the way through summer at the Pep Building there in Florence Villa. But we knew that as we went through this, that just because the summer ended and we started and our kids went back to school, our families still needed help. So we decided to, how could we bring the food to students, again, and their families? So we decided there had to be a way that we could get this food into the hands of our students at school while they were in classes. So we decided to create what's called a mobile food pantry where we actually bring the food to the students rather than the students having to go pick up the food. And Bobby was instrumental in, one, getting us the food. But through all of our other business partners, we were able to write a grant to a national organization called No Kid Hungry with help from the Public Education Partnership of Winter Haven, Growing Positivity, Midwest Food Banks, and then Bobby, to get this food out to our students and their families. So we looked at setting this up as a pilot program and looked at five of the Title I Schools in the Winter Haven area. And as you can see on the screen, those schools were Inwood Elementary, Garner Elementary, Snively, Juanita, and Lakeship Elementary. And the idea behind this was that all the food would be loaded into cooled box trucks that were donated and provided by Bobby and his group. The food was provided by Bobby and his group through his partnerships with Midwest Food Banks, and then we would take it to the school and deliver it as school went out, to car riders, to walkers, to bus riders, to parents, to anyone that wanted to show up and have a box of food. So here's where really the rubber hits the road, so you can really understand the impact that this man made on the district. We started at our five schools, and over the spring semester, we were able to rotate through each school at least twice. And as you can see, we started at Snively in March, and we distributed 420 boxes, which has about 14,700 pounds of food. And you can continuously see down the slide there, the amount of boxes and the amount of pounds of food that we distributed at those schools for students, their families, and our teachers, and all of our staff at those schools. And I have to tell you that the principals were on board, the teachers and staff really stepped up to help us unload this food, put it in cars, get it on buses, help walkers and bike riders take this food home. And this is really what is going to, I think, impress most people. Over the course of our 10 mobile food pantries at those sites, we distributed 4,500 boxes of food, which is about 159,000 pounds of food to our students, which equates, if you take the, anyway, it equals 132,000 meals that we distributed, and if you take that and put it into what the National Food Pantry say, multiplying that by $1.70, you come out to about $270,000 worth of retail food that was distributed into our Winter Haven schools. And folks, that's really, really amazing.[951.01][951.01](APPLAUSE). Oops, I lost it. Because this, there it is. So when we look at these, these are tangible measurements, things that you can measure in a dollar amount, pounds of food and all that, but what you cannot measure is you cannot measure the intangibles and the way we affected students in our schools. So I need to introduce you to some very special young folks. This is Yarley and her sister Ruby, they're on the left and the middle, and then their friend and neighbor Isabella from Snively Elementary School. When we did our first recognition, I mean, our first pantry at Snively Elementary, these three young girls came up and they wanted to know what was going on. They wanted to know what this box of food was. So we showed them. We said, inside that box of food, which weighs about 30 pounds, and it's very clumsy and cumbersome, there's a gallon of milk, there's fruits and vegetables, there's a pack of hot dogs, there's a bag of chicken, meat is in there, cheeses, there's cottage cheese, there's sour cream. All of this is to feed that family for days. These are third and fifth graders. As you can imagine, they're going to try to carry this box down Snively Avenue, which if you don't know where that is, on the sidewalk. They get back to the sidewalk and I say, girls, do you want me to help you with this? No, sir, we only live two streets down. Now, you know they didn't tell the truth. So I continued to watch these girls fumble with the box, try to carry it. I showed them how to carry it side by side. Finally, about a mile down, so we are at Ninth Street, they turned in at Second Avenue on Snively Avenue, almost back to Highway 17, they finally turned into their road. And I'm like, well, thank goodness that they made it. We continue to feed at that site. Forty-five minutes later, these three young ladies show back up with a dolly.[1058.88][1058.88](LAUGHTER).
Ah.
And this is where it gets you. You had to see the look on their faces of, sir, is there any way that we could have a few more boxes to take care of the people that live on our street? What do you do at that point? You say, yeah, and we get it down there. And we say, no, let's put it in the truck. And this is what makes Bobby happy when he hears stories about this, and this is what fulfills him with his mission through Freedom Tour. And we said, no, let's put it in a truck, we'll take it down there for you. No, sir, we want to do this on our own. The pride that those three girls had to be able to carry this food back to those families so that they could then provide for the families is why we are in education and we do what we do. So with that said, we would not have been able to do this without Mr. Williams and his whole staff over at Freedom Tour, over at Lake Wales. We are looking very much forward to doing some of this stuff in the summer and as we progress on into next year. So without further ado, I'd like to have Bobby come up and present him with the special award tonight.[1121.52][1121.52](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations. Thank you. We appreciate you very much.
I want to thank each and every one of y'all. Them stories like that touched my life. I'm from Polk County, went to school at L.E.S. Sorry.
It's okay.
I was one of them kids, growing up, and I just want to thank y'all because I went to Snively Elementary, kindergarten through sixth. I went through all the old public education system, actually, I went to school, Ms. Lisa. And we were the roughest, some of the worst of the worst, and obviously for me, it's about the gospel. God changed my life at 32, and it's a great opportunity to give back to the community. I don't want to keep y'all long, but I started ministry five years ago, feeding 10 homeless people in downtown Winter Haven. Moved to L.E.S. four years ago, feeding about 60 homeless people. To me, I know a lot of people look at COVID as a bad thing. For me, it was a blessing because it got a lot of people out of their houses, out of areas, out of, out into the sea, and there are people there in need to really reach people and love them people. And his story is, I've got probably thousands of them same stories. Just to let y'all know, we started, this is just, I never went to college, but just what the great of just Polk County education is, you know, I created my own business, been very wealthy at it, very good at it, and we give back to community. Last year alone, like I said, we started with feeding 10 homeless people. Last year, we brought $20 million of food into Polk County. Wow. And fed countless of thousands of people.[1224.65][1224.65](APPLAUSE). And our ministry, really, we're still in L.E.S., but we took over the Sears Building at Eagle Ridge Mall, which is 115,000 square foot. Right now, at this moment, we have 2 million pounds of food sitting on the floor. We distribute to Boys and Girls Club, we do schools, we do backpack programs, we feed 3,000 to 5,000 families a week. So I thank y'all for this. I don't do it for awards, he knows this. I'm a backseat man, I'd assume not. I don't want awards, it ain't about awards, it's about them little girls and other families touching and changing their lives and mainly bringing the gospel to them, but thank y'all for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.[1262.02][1262.02](APPLAUSE).
Yes. Dr. Warner, please step forward for a picture.
There we go. Yeah, forget the mask.[1272.58][1272.58](LAUGHTER). Hold on, Ms. Miller would like to say a few words.
I just want to recognize Bobby. Yes, we went to high school together. We won't tell each other stories, I'm sure.[1289.58][1289.58](LAUGHTER). But I want, I want people to know, this is an example of someone who is living their faith, not sitting at home or, you know, giving us advice, but really taking care of his community. And I just think, you know, I know for a fact, I've been at food bank deliveries at RCMA in Mulberry, helping the migrant farm worker population. This is a desperate need in Polk County. People do not realize the level of poverty, generational poverty. And it's our job as a school district to provide opportunities to get kids out of that, but while we're doing that, it takes people like Bobby and his organization to get them through this. So I just want to say thank you for what you're doing, and I hope you inspire others to do the same.
Amen.[1329.01][1329.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We appreciate your heart, your compassion, your leadership. Thank you for being inspirational in what you do for our kids, and you are, and the way you're living is what defines what it means to live and be and move in Polk County. And so thank you, thank you again. So can we give him another nice round of applause for all who helped him?[1356.01][1356.01](APPLAUSE). At this time, I would like for Barto High's Assistant Principal Angie Austin and Barto IB Assistant Principal Mandy Craven, please come forward for the Perfect Attendance Recognition. This is a, this is a very exciting recognition because this is just an incredible accomplishment to earn perfect attendance and to be recognized for this. So, and this occurred during COVID, so yes, thank you.
We are so excited to be here tonight to honor our student from Barto High School, from IB Barto, with the Perfect Attendance Award. We are so proud of this student. I'll go ahead and call up Cameron Cribs. Come on up, Cameron.[1427.01][1427.01](APPLAUSE). Give your hand, Perfect Attendance. Congratulations, we are so proud of you. And Cameron, we know that it took a lot of hard work for you to come to school every day and attain this accomplishment. Can you please tell us, how did you maintain that accomplishment?
Oh, well, I just felt like it was my responsibility to go to school. So when I woke up in the morning, I was like, well, it's time for school, I need to go. And, I mean, and when I was about in third grade, I looked at my mom, and I came home from school, I looked at my mom, I said, hey, Mom, I'm never missing a day of school, like, ever. And she was like, okay, I'm going to take you to school every day, and she did. And then, I mean, I got older and older, and then I got into high school, and I was like, well, I have a car now, I'm not missing school, there's no way. And, I mean, I graduated, I thought attendance was important, and yeah, I guess I just went every day.[1487.92][1487.92](APPLAUSE).
Cameron, we're so proud of you. That's absolutely a tremendous accomplishment, very inspirational.
Good evening, Board Members. Thank you for having us here tonight. Deputy Superintendent Hill, and welcome Superintendent Hyde. I am Mandy Craven, Head of School for IB Barto, and I am honored to be able to recognize Logan Duncan. So Logan, if you'll join me. Logan, yes.[1535.51][1535.51](APPLAUSE). Logan also accomplished perfect attendance from kindergarten through 12th grade, and he did it while he attended International Baccalaureate at Barto High School and pursued the IB curriculum. So, you know, just really diving into that rigorous curriculum, but also participated in varsity sports, and he can tell you a little bit about that, but just really proud of you for your perseverance and your grit to not sleep in after a varsity football game or take a day off to study for an IB exam. I'm extremely, extremely proud of your dedication, so congratulations.
So I'd like to start off today by thanking the School Board for honoring me today and thanking you for letting me speak in front of you. And more importantly, I'd like to thank my, my parents, my mom and dad, and my stepmom and stepdad, and my grandparents, because for many years, they were my transportation to and from school. You know, they're my motivation and my drive to go. And from a young age, my grandpa always told me that how hard I work now influences how hard I have to work when I get older. So for me, it was never really a goal to do this, but in elementary school, it just kind of happened, and middle school, it just kind of happened, and by the time I got to high school, I realized I was too close to quit. I had to, I had to keep it going. And so I'd like to thank you all again.
Thank you. Congratulations.[1643.15][1643.15](APPLAUSE).
Logan, I think Ms. Forney would like to say something.
Yes, y'all are in my district, District 3. I'm wearing my Barto IB Summerlin mask. You make me proud, Barto High IB, all the time. I love visiting that school because of students like y'all and going to the different events, and this just shows how much I miss teaching, and I did used to teach there, so unfortunately, I don't anymore, but y'all have such a bright future ahead of you, and I just praise your commitment because showing up is half the battle. And once you show up, we can, we can help you out. So that message to all the other little children. All right, thank you.
Logan, we're proud of you. Congratulations, that's outstanding. And, you know, Cameron and Logan, we may have to get in touch with y'all because I think you've got something very special. We could utilize y'all as motivational speakers.[1721.99][1721.99](LAUGHTER). We'll have to kind of submit a little something to PR to get ahold of you. Somebody say, no? Cameron, are you saying no?[1732.51][1732.51](LAUGHTER). Thank y'all again, we're very proud of you, both of you.[1736.82][1736.82](APPLAUSE). Madam Chair, that concludes our special recognition.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hill. Okay, the next item is public comments on agenda items, and I do have a list of individuals who have signed up to speak today, so I'm going to go ahead and start calling off the names, and if you'd be so kind and maybe line up over towards the left side of the room there, my left, your right, and we'll go ahead and proceed. You will have, each of you will have up to three minutes to speak, to address the Board. If you'd be so kind and state your name and address for the record, and here we go. First of all, Jonathan Riches. Jonathan Riches, if you'd like to come forward, please, to address the Board. Jonathan Riches. Okay, next I have Carolyn Holton. Carolyn Holton.
Do you think some people are outside?
Not these.
Are there people outside that want to speak? If there are, can we call for them? What is going on?
Okay, Jonathan Riches was the first name. I'll go through them again. Jonathan Riches, Carolyn Holton.
Since we have empty chairs, can we ask outside if these two are here, please?
That's what he's going to do now.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, of course. Calvin Holton? Is Calvin Holton here? I'm trying to find somebody inside. Molly Cutrell? Is Molly Cutrell here? Jarmee Tinley? Jarmee Tinley? Tamisha Vitello? Tamisha Vitello? Beverly Hartley? Charlie Warren? Pam Hanson? Pam Hanson? Come on up. Thank you for being patient. Go ahead, you've got three minutes to speak. Yes, ma'am.
My son is currently enrolled in Polk County School. The key word is currently. I've watched board meetings and seen people come up and compliment you, plead with you, and then thank you for hearing them. I will do none of those things. I do not respect you and the positions that you hold. I'm here tonight to tell you that you have poked the hive and we are swarming. I will not repeat to you the science that is readily available for you to research. I will not talk about the blatant hypocrisies or the recently released emails from Dr. Faiki. That right there should be common sense enough to drop this charade. You chose to collude with teachers' unions and sign a contract committing to keeping the students and staff in masks for the school year. How dare you? How dare you secretly agree to continue to physically and mentally abuse the children you claim to care about? How dare you secretly agree to silence the voices of children and their parents? How dare you secretly agree to punish our children academically and physically with this policy? How dare you? As adults and educators, you should know better. What you have chosen to agree to in secret must come with some kind of benefit. Maybe we should look into that. Now, to the teachers and staff, I hear and have read comments that you fear losing your job for speaking out against this policy. Yet in January of 2020, you had no problem leaving your job and students to protest the state government for more money, when you should protest why the top salary earners have the least interaction with our kids. We stood with you then. You should stand with us now, or you may lose your job due to lack of enrollment in the district. We have options for our children's education. Homeschool co-ops are forming, finding lower costs than institutionalized schooling, using a curriculum that is basic, hands-on, not teaching Common Core, critical race theories, social justice indoctrinations, or how to take and pass a test. This is more than just about a mask policy. This is we the parents letting you know we're watching everything now. You will not be able to circumvent us again. I am demanding the verbiage regarding masks be removed from the code of conduct policy, never to be placed again. You are not doctors, and the science you followed was a lie, perpetuated by an agenda that involved the teachers' union and the CDC, pushed by a lying doctor. If you choose to leave the verbiage in the policy to use at a later date, I will remove my son from the district and homeschool him with a co-op that does not want to be dictators, but educators. It is clear that your secret dealings, hypocrisy, and lack of due diligence in educating yourselves shows character, shows your character. You lack respect for the students, teachers, and parents. It shows that you are not leaders, but cowards. You are not people I want deciding my child's education. And lastly, it makes me question, what else has been agreed to secretly? I have no trust or confidence in this board. You have tarnished yourselves, and it will show when you campaign for your jobs. I leave you with this. There is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed or hidden that will not be made known. Thank you. Next, we'll have Jesse Suits. Is Jesse Suits here? Jesse Suits. Austin Brower? Brower?
That's me.
Austin, come on up.
Hey, guys.
Hi.
My name's Austin Brower. I live in Auburndale. And I'm pretty much up here today just to kind of bring some things to light. I graduated from Southeastern University twice, first with my bachelor's degree in science, and also my M B A after that. So I've been on education. I'm also really big on science. I absolutely love science. And the thing that's troubled me the most, what I've seen from the entire school district, is that there's no living in reality. Kids that wear these masks, five, six, seven-year-old kids, they don't wear them properly. They're not healthcare workers. They're dropping them on the ground, they're getting dirty, they're getting yelled at, and basically reprimanded if they don't put it back on their face. So here's a couple articles to question the entire narrative. Here's one from 2020. Airborne coronavirus particle passed directly through N95 face mask. Novel coronavirus from patients with pneumonia in China. Another article, randomized trial of cloth mask compared to medical mask in healthcare workers. Penetration of cloth mask by influenza particles is almost 97%. That's April 2015. Another study, respiratory performance offered by N95 respirators and surgical mask, April 2008. The study determined that the protection factor provided by N95 was minimal at best. Another article, June 2020, can the elastic of surgical face mask stimulate ear protrusion in children? The answer was yes, in the article. Another article, January 2021, the current article digs into face mask and COVID area health hypothesis. The base of the abstract, although scientific evidence supporting face mask efficacy is lacking, adverse psychological, physiological, and health effects are established. It has been hypothesized now that face masks have compromised safety and efficacy profile and should be avoided from all use. Another article, face mask surface may become a contamination source. Exactly what I brought up earlier. I could sit here and do this all day. Obviously, you guys don't want to listen to me ramble on about all the science that backs not wearing masks. So my question is, if the science isn't backing masks any longer, why are they still being told to wear masks? The only answer that I can come up with is obedience training. This appears that it's turning into nothing more than obedience training to teach these kids to follow exact orders. Cover your face, shut your mouth, don't talk unless you're spoken to. That is egregious. That is not something we can expect to live in like this in Florida. These children need to be free, they need to have fresh air, they need to live like kids. So I really, really hope you guys take this time and listen to everybody and make a very educated vote tonight, because a lot of these positions up here are elected. Just want to remind you guys of that. Have a good one.
Sorry, your cards were back to back.
I'm used to following my son. I like him. I'm Ted Brewer. I attended Florida State University. I've got degrees in biological science and chemistry, psychology and exercise physiology, and M B A from Florida State. I've been a scientist my entire life. I'm also an international bestselling author. And this face mask policy is just absolutely stupid. I could give you article after article, wearing an N95 mask for four hours reduces significantly CO2, or significantly oxygen levels. Use of N95 respirators compared with surgical masks is not associated with lower risk of laboratory influenza. This list goes on and on and on. I'll be more than happy to give you guys all of these clinical double-blind research studies, many of them, if you'd like to look at them. But here's the problem I've got. Albert Einstein, probably one of the greatest men of the last century, said the world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them without doing anything. Guys, it's enough. We now know that Fauci is a complete and total fraud. We've seen it in all the media. This whole thing is a complete and total fraud. We know what happens with the masks. We know they don't work. We know it reduces O2 levels. And you're having these kids that are passing out while running all over the country, M P E, wearing masks. It's enough. In addition to that, you know, I taught college for two years in Tallahassee, because I'm an educator. I love teaching, loved it. And here's what I didn't understand when I taught college. I was never taught of what the Frankfurt School was. Most of you probably don't know what the Frankfurt School was. It came out of Leipzig University, it came out of Geth University in Germany, and was basically started in the Soviet Union in the 1920s, after the Soviet Union could not promote communism, Russia could not promote communism to Europe and to the United States. They wanted to find out why the United States would not follow the communism. So they set up a group think tank called the Frankfurt School. I didn't even know about this when I was teaching, but I found out about it. And what they did, they were run out of Germany in 1933, went to Switzerland in 1934, they decided to go to Columbia University. And they started teaching cultural Marxism to our children, how to be good little peasants, how to destroy the nuclear family, how to destroy Christianity. My Lord and Savior is Jesus Christ. I love him with all of my heart. And for you guys to push this Common Core nonsense and cultural Marxism in the Polk County schools, when we are a conservative county, nauseates everybody in this room. We've had it. And, you know, we've had enough of it. And then, we got to remember something. These kids, when they're the ages from two to five to seven to eight, are in a theta brainwave state. That's from my degree in psychology from Florida State University. That means they have no buffer. You tell them that cultural Marxism is real, they believe you, because they can't say no to it. And you programmed these children from a young age to be cultural Marxists, and to turn this country into a doggone socialist nightmare. And that's where we have the school board in Polk County. I've got two grandchildren. I will not stand for this. I will stand against everything that you guys do for Common Core and critical race theory. Are you kidding me? White people are bad? Ah, shit.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Evelyn Large. Is Evelyn here? Come on forward. Come on up.
So I'm going to tell you a little bit about my story, and then I'm going to read my thing, because I'm a little nervous, because I don't do this.
It's okay. Don't be nervous.
So, my little boy is zoned for Griffin, which is a failing school.
Can you bring that? Yes, thank you.
My little boy is zoned for Griffin, which is a failing school. So I got him in Blake Academy, a magnet school. And at the end of the year of kindergarten, when he came home, he couldn't read. So I was able to get a voucher program, and I got him into a private school. Thank God. And I drive an hour and a half every single day to take him to and from. Now, my little boy made the principal's list this year. All semester, all year, the whole thing, five in his school. He's the best in science, he's the best in reading, he's the best in math. But that's no thanks to the Polk County school system. So, this is what I have to say. I want to start by accepting responsibility for not being more involved with our school board. And I only want to start paying attention when I don't agree with something. I want to start paying attention even when I do. With that being said, everyone has to start somewhere, so here I am. I believe in redemption, and I am here today to make amends for my part in this whole situation. I was complacent, uninformed, and I blindly trusted my elected officials. I was even to go as far as to say I was lazy. I erroneously believed that our elected school board members had our best, our children's best interest at heart, and perhaps at one time you may have. I have come to realize that collectively, we gave you our power, and you gave it away to corporations and special interest groups and teachers' unions to dictate our curriculum. You have violated your values by signing memorandums of understanding and then hiding it. You've held our kids hostages for a year with your authoritarian policies and unwillingness to admit that you were wrong. I want to be clear when I tell you that if you, if you make masks a part of the dress code, that you're violating, you have no right. It is a medical device. You do not have the right to authorize that. You do not have the authorize, or the right to authorize any injections or anything my kid puts on their face. So with that being said, I didn't elect the CDC, I didn't elect the W H O, or the teachers' unions, or any of the other... I elected you guys. And we've asked, and we've asked, and nothing. So let me just put it clear. Don't even run again, because we're done. And the group I'm in has 10,000 people. That's one group. There's...
Thank you. Linda Hayes. Is Linda Hayes in the room?
There's a Linda Hughes.
Looks like H A Y E S. Nope.
H U G A G S.
No, I don't have that one. I have... From Eagle Lake?
Yes.
Okay.
There can't be more than one of these.
Nope.
For those of you wearing masks, I would like to ask you, can you tell me how a Level Four, or how a virus can escape a Level Four biolab in Wuhan, China, can escape, but your mask is going to stop it? These masks that you're wearing from the drugstore have graphene in them. Graphene, long periods of time that they're worn will cause respiratory issues similar to having breathed in asbestos. So you need to choose more wisely. When this first started, CDC claimed there was less than a 10% chance of this virus being spread outdoors. Now they're saying 1%. One, healthy children and healthy people don't spread illness. Wearing a mask limits our O2. If you put a little oxygen generator on your finger, put your mask on it, check it in a minute, you'll see your oxygen level, your O2 level's dropped about 40 points, maybe 30. You're putting yourself at risk for hypoxia and hypoxaminia, which affects your organs and your brain. Coronaviruses are, I want to make sure I get my numbers right, 0.12 microns in size. Masks that you have on and the respirators only stop particles that are .3, 3 tenths to 8 tenths of a micron. So these masks are totally ineffective. Airborne coronavirus particles will pass right through your mask. So you're really hurting yourself and harming yourself. Dr. Simone Gold says last week that Fauci admitted the typical mask you buy at the drugstores is not really effective at keeping out a virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. Our politicians can lie to us, and it's called politics. But if we lie, then it's considered a felony. In case you haven't read the 3,200 or 2,300 pages plus from Fauci, COVID was made in a lab, his gain of function funded it, hydroxychloroquine is an effective cure, asymptomatic spread of the virus isn't possible, and masks are useless with viruses, all admitted by Fauci, who's a politician. There are no randomized control studies, I'll get that later. There was a study in Hong Kong at the onset of the outbreak about mask wearing. 94% wore masks, 83.7% wore disposable surgical masks, 13% wore them incorrectly. Some were worn inside out, upside down, just like our children, especially in primary grades do. And every time you touch it, you know it's contaminated. OSHA says masks ought to be fitted on an individual basis. And long-term use of masks cause fatigue and brain fog. These one-size masks don't fit all. And in our schools, that's what is expected for our children and our students to wear.
I would like to say that Ron DeSantis, on May 13th, stated that curidians should not be penalized for rejecting the overreach of local authorities to unnecessary mask mandates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, if we could have Ray Ryan. Ray Ryan.
Hello.
Hello.
Why are we not doing names and addresses today?
No. Just, yeah, if you would state that, that would be great.
Okay. So, my name is Ray Ryan, and I live at 1548 Cardinal Street in Auburndale. Mr. Hyde, welcome. Polk Countyans are kind of crazy. I'm not going to waste everybody's time regurgitating everything everybody's already said. I watched the meeting today, and I know you... I watched the meeting today and I know you guys are going to vote. And from my understanding, the majority is that you're going to make masks optional. My next question is, is you need to remove the policy. It's not fair. It's not right. I don't think it needs to be in there. I don't think that you guys should have that right and have it in the code of conduct to put it in place anytime. And I know in the meeting today, you guys said that it would be up to the board for the students and it would be up to Mr. Hyde for the teachers. I don't think that's right. I think it needs to go, period. I don't foresee another pandemic. Do you guys? I mean, I don't really think it needs to stay. Fortney, she implied that, you know, it needed to stay in the school policy so in case something else came up that you guys could just implement it. And she said it might not even be COVID. I don't really understand that. So it needs to be removed. I also know that four of you are up for reelection. And I'm here to tell you that if you guys do not listen to us and remove this policy, you will not be here next election, period. Sarah Beth, you're awesome. Mr. Allen, I know you just came in. So you two, but the other four that are up for reelection? I don't know. You guys, you really need to think long and hard about it if you want to keep your seat because it's not looking good. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next, let's have Patricia Ingles. Is Patricia here? Come on up.
So I'm Patricia Ingles at 160 Bonnie Shores Drive in Lakeland. And I just, I have a picture here of a child with MRSA on his face from the masks. This is the kind of illnesses coming from masks, whereas we've already shown that the masks aren't protecting them from, from illnesses. The, the virus can go right through the masks. And even if they get it, children don't get deathly ill. They are not likely at all to, to spread it to, to adults. We've seen that. That's been shown in multiple studies now that children do not spread it to adults. There is no reason for them to be protected with the mask and they get hurt by having the mask. Not only physically, it's been shown that they're becoming developmentally retarded, that's a bad word, but by, by wearing the mask because they can't interact, they don't learn the, the body language. Small children are getting hurt in their learning to speak by having a mask on because they're not watching the lips of the people they're talking to. Older children are having interaction with, with, learning body language. They're having trouble learning body language because of the mask. This masks only bring harm. They do not bring good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christine Pease. Christine, are you in the audience? Come on up.
I'm begging you.
If you'd state your name and address for the record.
I'm Christine Pease at 1064 Walt Williams Road, Lakeland.
Thank you.
I'm begging you all, I'm pleading, pleading with you all to unmuzzle my grandchildren. My grandchildren are not animals. They are human beings created in the image of God. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Pease. If you'd state your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara Hunter. This is my first time here, so I'm welcoming all of you.
Your address, please?
Huh?
Your address, please.
1147 North Lakewood Drive, Southeast Winter Haven.
Thank you.
I just want to say, as a prior teacher, an ESE specialist, teacher of the year, and other credentials that I have, I am concerned because I have grandchildren in this system too, as well as friends and family that are in this system, as well as teachers that are in this system. I even have adults that are in this system. And what my concern is, is what they're breathing when they have these masks on. When you have the mask on, you take it off, you do an oxygen, and you'll see it's usually at 650. When you take and put the mask back on, you do takes the oxygenator and you put it back up under and you do the same normal breathing, it goes to 9,937. So you're losing oxygen. My concern is the bacteria on the face, as you saw in the picture of Roachia, the bacteria that's rubbing against them, what they're breathing in, what's going into the respiratory system, but not only there, it's what's going into the lungs. And they're finding more and more children are having respiratory, you know, problems in their lungs and breathing because of not being able to breathe. That's why the children need to be unmasked immediately, right now. You don't need to waste one more meeting or anything else. My other concern is I see the depression on the children's faces when they cannot see the smiles on their teachers' faces. They cannot see their children, the other children. Running with masks on at PE is absolutely insane. Having them in the lunchroom is insane. How are you supposed to eat? Think about when you go out to eat and you go to other places where you can go eat. The children need to have the same considerations even though they're in school. These children need to be protected and they need to be protected now before all of this other stuff comes out. We know Dr. Fauci is wrong. We know the masks that you are wearing are not doing you any good at all. All it's doing is causing you brain fog. How can children learn when they have brain fog, when they have lack of oxygen in their body? Do you understand what I'm saying? So to me, it's like you're killing our children without allowing them to have oxygen. Every one of them are getting sick and sicker and sicker each day as this goes on. Please stop this immediately. Those of you who are here, who are up for reelection, I guarantee you, you will not be here next time. We are done with this. We want our children unmasked. This is nothing but propaganda. And when the truth comes out, you'll understand you're breathing the same air with the mask on as without the mask on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Carolyn Holton. Carolyn Holton? Once again, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Carolyn Holton. I'm from Lakeland. I'm here as a mom, a friend, and family member to people in the school system, and as a data scientist whose job includes studying COVID in Polk County. Science is a key part of our curriculum. COVID-19 may be the most impactful science lesson our kids live through during their school years. We can model that science matters, or we can teach them that the lessons they learn in school aren't relevant to the real world. I'm in favor of acknowledging that our personal preferences don't determine what's safe for our children. If the science-deep public health experts at the CDC tell us it's safe for our student population to be in school without masks is false, I'm going to be so happy. And if they don't, I'll be happy if you make the safe decision for them about masks based on the science known at that time. Let's not tie our hands now. Here's some of what we know. Early studies that concluded kids don't spread COVID were incorrect. As we learned more about the spread, we were also able to determine that the range of COVID virus shed by infected kids matches the range of COVID shed by hospitalized adults, even when most kids are asymptomatic. We know that kids are being hospitalized with this disease. And that a quarter of those hospitalized are in intensive care and one in 20 of the hospitalized kids have to go on a ventilator. We know that kids, we know that MISC, the multi-system disease that can arise months after even an asymptomatic case of COVID, is much more prevalent than we used to think. Many kids who get MISC are still suffering six months after contracting it. They may be at home on oxygen. They may have physical therapy to get their function back. They may have other enduring impacts. Most kids come through COVID fine. Some don't. As parents, we don't know if we're going to have that kid who has a very bad outcome. COVID-19 follows the properties of inertia. Most of us remember from science class that an object at rest tends to stay at rest and an object in motion tends to stay in motion. When COVID cases rise, they tend to continue to rise because there are more people to transmit the virus. When they fall, they're likely to continue to fall because we come in contact with fewer people able to transmit the virus. But something can happen to exert force on the object and change its motion or disrupt its rest. New variants are one of those forces for COVID. The Delta variant that devastated India has cases on the rise again in the UK, and that one's starting to spread in the US too. If we don't vaccinate enough to prevent it, cases are likely to be on the rise again in the fall. Science also tells us that variants develop mostly among unvaccinated groups. Since kids under 12 aren't yet eligible for vaccination, come this fall, our elementary and middle schools will have a higher concentration of unvaccinated people than most any other place in our communities. New variants make both vaccinated and unvaccinated people less safe. There's more I could say about the science, but the main point I want to make is that the CDC are the science-driven experts for determining what's safe based on current conditions. I urge you to follow their guidance and not make a decision tonight that will make it harder to do what science says is safe with regard to masks when the school year rolls around. Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Hyde, almost Dr. Hyde. And I want to say that Jesus Christ is my Lord and Savior too. God made science. I'm in awe of His creation and I hope that we can disagree and not be angry with each other.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Calvin Holton.
My name is Calvin. I also live in Lakeland. I'm a BARTOIB student from Lakeland and I was glad that I was able to do e-school until most of the teachers were able to get vaccinated because I knew that was safer. But when I went to school after spring break, wearing a mask was, it just felt like less than doing online. This small sacrifice of wearing a mask protects people that don't have the vaccine or doesn't work well for. And all of us, since it means new variants that could send our cases up again are less likely to develop. I'd like for us to listen to the CDC scientists and keep each other safer with mask wearing until they tell us that's not what's needed anymore. That works a lot better if we all do it. I hope you as a school board will make the decision that is the right one. Making masks optional is just not worth the risk of our lives. Please keep them required until the CDC says we don't need them in schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if we could have Molly Cutrell.
Hi there. My name is Molly Cutrell from Mulberry, Florida. And I'm here, first of all, I hear us talking about the science. With the emails and things that have come out, Fauci has proved himself to be a fraud, to be a liar, to fear mongrel, to scare people. I'm sick of it in our school. I should be home with my family. I should be cooking dinner. I should be tending to what they have going on. But instead, I'm here and I'm fighting for the rights of my kids. I'm fighting for their freedoms. Somebody wants to get vaccinated and that's the thing. If you want to go get vaccinated, go get vaccinated. Then you should be safe. Then you don't have anything to worry about. If you want to wear five masks on top of your vaccination, wear your five masks on top of your vaccination. But we're not cattle. You're not shoving us all together. We're, I'm not vaccinating my kids. They're not wearing masks and they will not go to school again in Polk County if we can't do something here. You guys have, went shysty as far as putting this into the code of conduct. It's all backwards bull crap. It's simple as this. Let them breathe. Let them speak. Let them see each other smile. Let them see each other's expressions. Give our kids their freedom back. You are in the reddest county and the reddest state. And if you think that the people are going to keep sitting back and letting you do this to our kids, you are sadly mistaken. Four seats are open. I know four people who can fill them. That's not a problem. People who are okay with our children having freedom. You sit there and look like you're asleep and I appreciate that because we're here, we're trying to fight for our children. It's not a big deal to you. It's a big deal to us. It, it, I'm over it. I shouldn't even be here. I should be home with my family. So should these people? And it's a shame that here in a red state and a red county, we are having to fight for our freedom. As far as science, read the emails that have been leaked. My daughter sat next to me with one of those masks on. She sneezed and it came right through. Do you think that's really helping? No, it's not. I don't know why you guys feel like you need to be in control of our kids. It's not up to y'all. It's up to us. They're our children. I carry those stretch marks, not none of you. It's our freedom to choose what's best for our kid. If you're scared, be scared at the dang lab. Go get your shot. Go get your kids shots. Go get everybody shots. The rest of us just want to be free Americans. We live in America. This is not China. This is not a third world country. It's America and we're here fighting for our freedom. Why? It's simple. Let our kids be kids. Let them go to school. Let them see each other smile. I got $4,000 worth of braces on each one of my kids' faces and they want to show them off. Let them show them off. They're teenagers.
Thank you.
Jonathan Riches, Polk County taxpayer, born and arrived 45, community patriots. You know what the real danger to our children are? Y'all. The Polk County School Board. Y'all are the most dangerous people out there. Shame on all of you of what you've done to these children for years. You guys are disgusting. All of you are disgusting of what you did to these children. I sunshine well request. This Polk County and anyone out there, if you want to get records, sunshine well request. Pound these people with sunshine well request. You'll get answers. I've heard the emails from parents complaining about ill effects of their children. I have no sympathy for you people. You people are disgusting. Children were suffering for the last year.
And what is your address?
I'm not giving, what's your address? Matter of fact, I have your address. I've been verifying you. Just like I did an opportunity research on all of you.
It's fine. Why won't you give your address on public?
Because of Antifa and BLM, they're Marxists. I'm not giving my address. I don't have to give my address.
I'm showing you're from Tampa, though. You said I'm a Polk County taxpayer.
Who cares where I'm from? Why you asking me a rhetorical question?
Because I think you should let people know.
We're going to vote you out. And matter of fact, all of you people are going to get recalled. All of you people are going to get recalled. We're going to recall you. This is a chartered county. They can get recalled. They don't have to get voted out. We can recall them now. We're tired of it. The parents and the people are tired of this. There's people out there that want to come in and they can't even hear the meetings because you got the door locked. Look at this room spaced out. There's more people that could fill in here.
It says you're going to talk about the masks. Could you get to the point?
Unmasked mandatory masks are unconstitutional. We are going to challenge your curriculum. We are going to challenge your budget. We know about all your conflicts of interest, all your businesses. We know about all your speeding tickets and your vehicle infractions. We're coming. And you think it's funny, we're coming. Dr. Fauci's a fraud and I'm going to come in front of every one of your people's houses with a bullhorn on a public street because it's my right. Go in front of their houses. Get a bullhorn. Just like I went in front of Dr. Fauci's house in Washington DC. He's a scam artist. You said all these years, trust, you said for the last year, trust the science. Trust the science. Well, guess what? The science says no more masks, yet you're virtual signaling saying, oh, masks count and whatnot. Masks don't work. You're listening to a little weasel named Dr. Fauci. He's a fraud. He's a scam artist. Where do you get your medical advice from? Where do you people get your medical advice from? Dr. Kevorkian, Jack Kevorkian? Dr. Kevorkian, Jack Kevorkian? Because you're trying to kill the kids. People showing you pictures of kids that are suffering, you disregard. You know what I also did? You are the only school board in the country right now under investigation for child abuse because I reported you to Florida Department of Children and Families. And I encourage everybody, if you see these people, report them. Report them. Report them for child abuse because that's what y'all are: child abusers. Your legacy will be child abusers. Long-term effects, and you're being sued. Who has to pay for the lawsuits? The taxpayers. Y'all are being sued. You're going to, who pays for it? And you don't care because it's in your official capacity. I hope you all get sued in your individual capacities. Remember this face. And come on my Facebook page. I've got 2 million followers. Jonathan Riches. Come on my Facebook page. I'm going to make fun of you later.
Thank you very much. Jamie Tinley? Is Jamie Tinley here? Tanisha Vitello? Tanisha? Hello.
Tanisha Vitello, 2828 Old Tampa Highway, Lakeland. I'm talking about masks today. What's the motto in this school district? Students first, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Why is it that we've yet to see students put first this entire year? They've had everything fun taken away from them, from something that has a 99.97% survival rate. They cannot take field trips. They cannot enjoy parties in their classroom. They cannot be within six feet of their peers. A lot of activities they used to enjoy have been taken away. And for what? Because teachers put fear before their students? And the teachers' union think that they know better than parents? No. Educators need to educate and let parents parent. You are supposed to teach my kids math, English, science, social studies, and social skills, not about viruses and fear mongering. My kids live in a house where we have open discussions about things going on in the world, and we, as their mom and dad, teach as much as they need to know for their ages. I'm still mad about the coronavirus lesson taught at the beginning of the year. My child was told that if she didn't wear a mask, she could kill people. That's lovely for your teachers to tell my seven-year-old. Luckily, she's smarter than that and knows that it's not true. And she knows that washing her hands, covering her mouth, and nose are what keep people from getting sick, not a mask. We, the parents, are tired of being told how to raise our children. So you, the school board, have two options: end their mask mandate, remove it from your code of conduct, and start listening to your parents and students, or we'll take our children out of Polk County, and you'll lose your funding.
Thank you. Next is Beverly Hartley.
My name is Beverly Hartley. My address is 1235 Sunset Avenue, Bartow, Florida. Many of you know me. I've worked for the school board for 34 years, 18 of those years for Mr. Bridges and for the school board as well. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the face-covering policy that was adopted into the code of conduct by the board on August 25, 2020. The policy states that students must wear a face covering, a mask, at all times required by the district. There's no explanation as to exactly what that means and is solely at the discretion of the board and the interpretation of school administration and staff, with no parental input on the health and safety of their own children. This school year, students in Polk County were made to wear masks for seven to eight hours straight. They had no breaks. From the time they got on the bus till the time they stepped on the school board property until the time they got off the bus and stepped off that property, they were wearing masks. I know that my grandchildren were forced to wear these masks, even at PE, outside while playing and even while running laps. After this was brought to the board's attention at a recent board meeting, it was determined that children were not supposed to have been wearing those masks during PE. Apparently, staff was not made aware of this fact during the school year, and many children, my grandchildren, suffered needlessly. In addition, students, including my grandchildren, were threatened with punishment and/or were punished for occasionally having the mask below their nose just so that they could catch a breath. My granddaughter was suspended. My granddaughter has had bronchitis since April. My granddaughter has had a rash on her face. You know her, big red. Great kid, smart, great grades, fantastic kid. And we're punishing them for a stupid mask that doesn't work. I believe the board was trying to do the right thing in a difficult situation. You guys aren't evil people. I know that. I know many of you. We're trying to make all the parties feel safe and comfortable while finding a way to educate children. I know that. However, putting a face mask into the policy, in the code of conduct, where children will face punishment if they don't wear them or they don't wear them properly, especially now that we know that cloth face masks and the blue non-surgical masks, they don't filter viruses. You can read it on the box. Pick up a box at Walmart, and it says it.
I had one, but the one thing I did want to say was thank you to Ms. Reynolds for voting against it. For Ms. Fortney, for answering emails, thank you because you're the only one that did, including the superintendent staff, they didn't answer them either, to any of these And to Dr. Allen, thank you for your comments today during the work session. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to call up Melissa Courier. Melissa Courier. Go ahead.
Charlie Warren, 2216 Edmonton Street, Wintereaven, Florida, 33880. Dean of Students, Frost Roof Mill Senior High School. A lot of things that I could talk about today. One thing I'd like to encourage y'all to do is there's Clay Clark, who's a great business leader, has already done a Health and Freedom Conference in Tulsa, enlightened many people in the Oklahoma area. He's doing a conference on June 17 through 19. It might be a great opportunity to just define a lot of things, where your frontline doctors, different people on different truths on COVID-19, different therapeutics that frontline doctors were trying to use and have been using, preventions that frontline doctors use, facts about our vaccines. I think it'd be a great opportunity for somebody to go to that. I think there's still an opening. So anyway, Health and Freedom Conference. So anyway, we've got the mainstream media putting out all kinds of narratives. We have six billionaires controlling what's being said across the airwaves. So why do most, why do our masks not really, you know, that should be off for everyone, especially children? With the lack of time, there's great people who've been going around our nation speaking about, there's experts, experts in OSHA, there are experts in environmental health, safety professionals, that when everything hits the fans in a hospital, they call these people in. They call them in to save the day because everything is going wrong in their hospital, and people are dying, and they come in. This is their steps that they recommend every place they go into. First of all, they check for ventilation. They do what's called an HVAC ventilation. It does cost $400 per room. It lets them know what's going on in each room and get any kind of reading on what's happening and try to assess what's happening. UV sanitation lights, that's the second thing that they'll do. They'll check that out and see if any kind of lighting can come in and save the day. Purifiers is the third step that they will do. The next step is enhanced cleaning training routines, like, for example, cleaning this room. They just do a quick wipe down. If you do it correctly, it's a 10-minute spray, and then you wipe. That way, you're just not spreading stuff, you're actually killing it. The last step is doing a mask. The mask should have been fitted on all of our students and staff. We should have had a professional come and actually fit us for that mask professionally because everybody's face is different. That way, it doesn't cause trouble, running out of time. Each staff and student must go through tests to see if they can function. I can tell you for a fact, I did not function with my mask and had to go to the doctor and get an exemption. My levels of oxygen went down too far. I can only imagine what happened to these poor kids. If you touch your mask, it's no longer any good. I don't know about you, but all the kids at my school touched their mask numerous times. They, I mean, it's just, there's nowhere else to say. There's much more to say, but, you know, we have a lot to learn. We came to find out about, was really truth about all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next, I have Jessie Suits. Jessie Suits? Hi there. There you go, come in the box. And if you'll talk, go a little closer to the mic so we can make sure we hear you. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jessie James, and this is a poem I wrote. It's called "The Fight for Freedom This Past Year." It's inspired by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow's "The Midnight Ride of Paul Revere." Listen, Polk County, and you shall hear of the fight for freedom this past year. In the month of March the year 2020, fear and panic were in plenty. We knew the fight for freedom was near. I say to my friends, "How long will we mask?" "To the end of the year, the entire class?" They would all say, "Is that something to ask?" Not many liked it, but had to comply. It seemed so depressing to live this lie. "One year if we're lucky and two if we're not, but will all of this even in there, I thought? Will we all be quarantined, vaccinated, and masked if another virus comes again to attack?" Then I said, "Let's fight." And with troubled minds, many others decided it's not the time. And just as I thought you would think logically, you put masks on kids in the heat of PE. Some teachers, along with the school board too, thought that this was the right thing to do, but kids like me struggled to try and breathe through. All of our voices were muted, ignored, and we asked, "Will our chains ever be torn?" Then we tried to warn you, you were doing wrong by telling you we're suffering. These masks, we said, we wear them all day, some wear them to bed. Enough is enough. We've put up with this too long. Unmask the kids and break the chains of tyrannical rules that began to reign. It seems as if our lives won't be the same if we wear these shackles again and again. I've had it with being told to be quiet. I tell you this, I won't go silent. We're done with all of this compliance. So through the night, we'll all stand here and take back our freedoms that men died for. So I ask you kindly, Polk County School Board, hear our cries of protest and not of fear. Our voice in the darkness, our knock at the door, and these words that shall echo forever more. Please lift these mask mandates for all the students, teachers, janitors, principals, and volunteers. Consider the facts and effects with prudence. Then this meeting will be filled with cheers. I hope my words that you all hear will inspire the fight for freedom next year.
Wow. What an awesome poem! Wow! Can you tell us how old you are and where you go to school? You're amazing.
I go to a classical school called Geneva, and I'm 11.
Wow. You're an amazing young man. And to get up here in front of everyone after creating your beautiful poem and saying it in front of all of us, I'm so impressed, and I'm so proud of you, son. You did a great job tonight. Let's give him another round of applause. Okay, board members, that concludes all of the individuals who've signed up to speak regarding items on our agenda. We will have other parts coming, okay? Okay, so the next part of our meeting, board members, is now to approve 10 sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the May 11, 2021, school board meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the May 11, 2021, school board meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The second set of minutes is for the May 11, 2021, work session. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the May 11, 2021, work session minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The third set of minutes is for the September 3, 2020, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the September 3, 2020, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The fourth set of minutes is for the September 29, 2020, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the September 29, 2020, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The fifth set of minutes is for the October 13, 2020, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the October 13, 2020, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The sixth set of minutes is for the November 30, 2020, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the November 30, 2020, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The seventh set of minutes is for the January 12, 2021, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept January 12, 2021, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The eighth set of minutes is for the March 9, 2021, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the March 9, 2021, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The ninth set of minutes is for the April 21, 2021, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the April 21, 2021, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The 10th set of minutes is for the April 22, 2021, superintendent search meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the April 22, 2021, superintendent search meeting minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is our approval of today's consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the June 8, 2021, consent agenda as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we discussed in work session today that we were going to have a discussion on several items that were pointed out by board members. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Hyde to discuss the four items or to call on staff appropriately for the items that were flagged today during our work session.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, Madam Chair, and members of the board, members of community and staff, thank you. So we will bring Angela up front, who will address the first two items that were discussed. This was, as the board discussed during the workshop, an interest that you have moving forward that certain line items on the consent agenda that may exceed a certain dollar amount that are not traditionally reoccurring issues. For the sake of transparency, we want to make sure that we're providing a brief narrative to explain those expenditures. to explain those expenditures. The first two items that were identified today, earlier today, was item number two and item number 11. Item number two is the Southwest Middle School, and item number 11 was the 21C Elementary School, so.
Yes, good evening. This is the contract for the architect to design Southwest Middle School. In January, the board approved the item. We went through the selection process, and on May, you all approved the contract with Tron Trout. So this is their fee of $1,455,000. The second item is the creation of the pro-- sorry.
It's okay.
Do I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Okay. The second item is the creation of a project for a new elementary school just south of Chainah Lakes. This is the first time you'll take action on this project. It was in last year's capital plan. At the workshop in October, I brought it back. So this is to create the project. On the same agenda, you also have to award the project to the Ziskovich Architect to build the same prototype that we're building at Willow Oak and Bellicita.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any further questions on those two items? Sorry, Mr. Hill, I kind of took over there for a second. I apologize. I'm a guest tonight.
Go ahead.
You're entitled to.
Next item was item number 24, EnvO Healthcare. Dr. Lutz will join us. EnvO Healthcare, as you know, is a program, an outsourced program that uses BCBAs and other behavioral therapy approaches to minimize the frequency in this district in particular. Your programmatic approach to this was to reduce Baker Acts and students who are exhibiting violent behaviors. But Dr. Lutz, if you'll please explain, your data was very impressive.
Yeah, we've had a significant reduction in those risk factors, including Baker Acts, restraints, and seclusions. And so we know that the program is working. Currently, this school year, the program is in 10 schools, and we are working with EnvO to increase that to 12 sites. We've had a lot of elementary success, and we'd like to repeat that success in middle school, so we're looking at adding a middle school site as well as another elementary. We are working with EnvO also to establish some very consistent exit criteria for those programs. When the students have mastered their behavioral or emotional goals, our initial step is to reintegrate them into the regular school environment at the school where the IBU classroom is located. And as they're successful with that, they will then begin their transition back to their zone school. So the increase from last year, this year is simply representative of adding two more units, and EnvO provides 100% of the staff as of next year. We did have one Polk County School Board teacher teaching one of those classes this year at Floral Avenue Elementary. However, she is retiring. So EnvO will fully staff those programs.
I just have a quick question. Can we get a list of the 12 locations of the 12 units?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'd like to bring this item back in July or August to have further discussion because it is worth the conversation, and I think the data, again, that I've seen reflected in the district is quite impressive. But the growth is due to demand. The need is there for us to continue to improve our socio-emotional wraparound supports for students, especially those who are exhibiting these behaviors of self-harming behaviors and others. And so it has been incredibly successful, and I'd like to bring that conversation back to the board in the future. And quite honestly, to benefit our stakeholders, they need to understand and hear what this program does and how it emphasizes student support. So, Dr. Lutz, thank you.
And I'll be happy to bring the updated data for this current school year as we're analyzing that and collecting it now on restraints, inclusions, and Baker Acts. And we'll have that for you in July.
Thank you, sir. The last two items were items number 40 and items number 37. So item number 40 was the UDT IST contract. That is our filtering software in order for us to be compliant with federal and state requirements for us to protect student information and student data. For example, every time a student goes online, we have filtering software that ensures that their information is being sustained privately, in addition to which this is part of COPA, the Children's Online Protection Act, and SIPA, Children's Internet Protection Acts, as I shared earlier today. This software, again, is for a three-year commitment, so you're seeing the bulk. That's why it exceeded almost close to $1 million, but that is our filtering software. I was really impressed as our district, and I got, I'm starting to get more and more of the history and the narrative. As you transitioned during COVID to a remote environment, the district did not have this level of sophistication and support to ensure that we were protecting our students in an online environment. So very pleased and proud of the fact that the staff had taken, and the board took aggressive action last year to implement this in a timely manner. The partner, quite honestly, did a great deal of work, is my understanding from the team. They did a great deal of work for us, actually for free, to help support and sustain our implementation throughout the year. So kudos to the district staff and to the board and to Superintendent Byrd for her hard work in making that happen. The last item was item number 37. This was one that Dr. Allen requested earlier today. We had a discussion, and that's for Safari Montage. So Safari Montage, if you think back to your elementary school days and middle school days, I was one of those kids that got sent down to the media center to check out the film strip projector or to get the old reel-to-reel film projectors. Maybe I'm showing my age. Well, I am showing my age. And it wasn't just to get me out of class because I was a troublemaker and to give my teacher a little bit of peace. But at the end of the day, you have to, we realize that over time, storing all that content becomes incredibly difficult and unwieldy. And so even for school districts who try to centralize all of their AV material and content, it's an unmanageable task. Also, what Safari Montage does for our instructional staff, our teachers, is it allows them to search vetted, appropriate content by benchmark, by standard, and in many instances, there are actually lesson plans that have been submitted by their colleagues across the nation, so they can use that as a repository, and everything's available virtually. It eliminates the need for students to have to watch the entire two-hour movie just to grasp one small concept. So it's a very powerful tool. It eliminates, again, the need for us to continue to purchase items. So if a VHS tape or DVD or CD breaks, and I challenge you to try and find a laptop anymore that has a CD player on the side of it, but we've really gone to a web-based multimedia digital platform. That's what we have with Safari Montage. And as was pointed out earlier today, it also is a repository for all district-developed media. So any content that we develop, everything that gets posted to the web, training utilities, information, spotlights, all of that also gets stored in there so that we can maintain it in perpetu-- perpetuity moving forward, excuse me. So those are the five items that were identified earlier today.
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Hyde, for those explanations. I, just for the public's information, I initiated this request because we had some items that were rather high in dollar value, well over $1 million, and I just felt like it was important in the interest of transparency to have a little bit of background related to those items. So again, thank you for that, and I appreciate the explanations.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second now to accept the June 8th, 2021 Consent Agenda as Printed. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is our new administrator announcements. Mr. Hill, do we have any announcements today?
Madam Chair, we do. We have quite a few. We're excited to announce these new administrators and excited about their leadership and their level of excellence. We have Joseph McNauton III has been appointed Associate Superintendent Chief Academic Officer. He has been serving as our Senior Director of K-12 Mathematics, Curriculum, and Instruction. Dan Talbot has been appointed as Director of Athletics. Dan has been serving as Senior Coordinator of Athletics. Jennifer Dedling has been appointed as Principal of Jesse Keen Elementary. She was serving as Acting Principal at Jesse Keen Elementary. Roderick Gray has been appointed as Principal of Laurel Elementary. He was serving as Acting Principal at Laurel Elementary. Charlie Huntley has been appointed as Principal of Philip O'Brien Elementary. He was serving as Acting Principal of Philip O'Brien Elementary. Elizabeth Munoz has been appointed as Principal of Eastside Elementary. She was serving as Acting Principal of Eastside Elementary. Deborah Wright Hudson has been appointed as Principal of McLaughlin Middle. She was serving as Acting Principal at McLaughlin Middle. Laura Nedering House has been appointed as Principal of Garden Grove Elementary. She was serving as Assistant Principal at Inwood Elementary. Carrie Brown has been appointed as Assistant Principal of Bartow High School. She was serving as Assistant Principal II at Bartow High School. Christopher Ford has been appointed as Assistant Principal of McLaughlin Middle. He was serving as Acting Assistant Principal at McLaughlin Middle. Please join me in giving a nice round of applause to these outstanding school-based leaders and district leaders. If, is anyone present today? If you're present, please stand up. I know there's one out there for sure.
Please come up.
It's Mr. Joe McNaut.
You can say a few words. We'd like that.
You don't get off without a speech.
That's right. The pressure's on you representing everybody now.
Madam Chair, respected board, Superintendent Hyde, I am honored to serve as the next Chief Academic Officer of Polk County Schools. It's, you guys have given me such an opportunity for leadership across the district. I am just looking forward to continue the successes that we've built on and the areas that we need to improve, collaborate with the whole community to find solutions. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I know my wife and kids couldn't be here, but I have part of my work family here, so we're supported on the math team.
Please stand. Stand. Everybody stand to be recognized.
So thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. McNaut. Madam Chair, that concludes our new administrator announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Awesome. Next, we come to our action agenda. Our first item is demolition of portables. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the demolition of 48 portables that are over 20 years of age and are in pretty poor condition. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our second item is the Educational Five-Year Plant Survey. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Florida Department of Education's Required Educational Five-Year Plant Survey 5.1. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Our next item is our Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee, and the chair will entertain a motion to approve Karen Tyner to the Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And I would add that Ms. Tyner was my appointee to this committee. She will replace Derek Fiecher, who is a city manager in Haynes City, who recently accepted a position as city manager in Daytona Beach. So we wish him well, and we're excited to welcome Ms. Tyner to the committee. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Our next item is the IDEA Grant Allocation. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the grant allocation for the federal IDEA Part B entitlement grant for the 2021-2022 school year. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is mask face coverings as part of School Board Policy 8450.01. The chair will entertain a motion to lift the requirement that students in kindergarten and higher grades wear a face mask effective tomorrow, June 9th, 2021. Thus, the wearing of a face mask shall be at the option of the student or parent. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson.
I will be voting to support this motion beca-- for a number of reasons. First of all, I think it's clear that the CDC believes now that vaccines work, and we heard from our Surgeon General for the state of Florida indicating that vaccinations work, and by the end of this term, all of the students coming back from ages 12 and up will have an opportunity to have been vaccinated. It seems to me that most of the research now is pretty clear that younger students have less severe symptoms when they do, you know, when they do, when they are affected by COVID. So I think this is the right thing to do at this time. We had a discussion earlier today about whether or not to leave this in, as a policy in the code of conduct. I, you know, what I heard was that it's important to do so because there will be some students who will choose to wear masks, understandably so, and they will have a right to do so. And it's important to have this in the code of conduct so that those students aren't wearing masks that have symbols and verbiage on them that are inappropriate in the school district. I'm not sure that I understand that. You know, we had a little bit of conversation about whether that could be covered in another part of the policy. So the reason I am voting for this this evening is because it, I think, is the right thing to do in terms of, in terms of making masks optional immediately. We're going to have another conversation about it as it relates to policy. And at this point in time, I am predisposed to say that it shouldn't, should not be in our policy, but I think we should have that, we need to have that conversation. I need to have a better understanding of why it should be in our policy, maintained in our policy as opposed to those issues being covered by other parts of our code of conduct and dress code and things of that nature. So we'll have that conversation for the general public later, but immediately then, we have the opportunity to make the mask mandate optional. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just adding a little bit to Mr. Wilson's comments, I too will be voting, obviously, to lift the mask mandate and make it optional. But I did want just to note on, in policy, it has to sit for at least 30 days. So for us to discuss it, we have to let it sit before we can actually vote on it, and that's specifically designed so that the public will be able to have an input once, before it gets solidified and put into policy. It's the same process that was used last summer. So our plan is to bring it to the work session on July 27th to iron out what, if it were to stay in policy, what it would look like. I think there is some interest in removing it from policy, but so that will, that conversation will happen on the 27th, and then it will have to sit for 30 days so that we can get public input on it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to the public, that that is the process that we have to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Fields?
Thank you. We've had a lot of discussion over the last several months about the masks and the face covering, and at our last board meeting, I think that the majority of us was in support of the motion that's coming before us tonight. But we wanted to hear from our incoming superintendent, Mr. Hyde. We had already heard from our current superintendent, Superintendent Byrd, and we were able to hear from him today, and he is in support of the motion that will be coming before us in a few minutes. So I want to thank him for his input today and the information he was able to provide, the due diligence that he's done as far as speaking with the health department and other stakeholders, and so I am comfortable supporting the motion. I guess my only question would be, is that if by some chance we end up having more cases to surface, will we go back and revisit it? Or do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Hyde?
Mrs. Fields, members of the board, so thank you for the question. Ultimately, the decision to implement or mandate mask-wearing doesn't necessarily always just reside with us, as we shared, as we discussed earlier. There are state, county, and/or federal agencies that may interject themselves in the narrative. Within the school board policy, you always maintain that authority to implement them, but it is a data-driven decision. It is not, it does not have to be uniformly administered, as we discussed earlier. There may be situational issues or instances within a certain school, within a classroom, within certain settings, that we may find as an alternative to quarantine or having to close a school due to an outbreak, this might be the recommendation. So no, it will be, it's not something that we anticipate, but it is something that we would work collectively with, with our schools, with our communities, with our health agencies to make an informed decision. And I think that's what we heard parents saying mostly tonight, is let's make an educated, informed decision as to our policy recommendations moving forward. But again, the discussion earlier today, the recommendation to allow it to remain in policy, in particular in the student code of conduct, stems solely from the fact that some families will opt to have their child wear a mask. As a direct result, we then need to have safeguards in place to prevent it from violating our student code of conduct. More importantly, the dress code aspects to ensure that we don't have masks with graphic images or profanity or other symbols of hatred and other things like that. So that's where that stems from. But again, it remains a choice. It's only applicable to those who choose to wear a mask at school. But as far as the future is concerned, we will let the data and let the situations dictate where we go, again, in collaboration with local and federal and state-county agencies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Anyone else? Any other comments? Seeing none, I will restate the motion. The motion is to, I have a motion and a second, to lift the requirement that students in kindergarten and higher grades wear a face mask effective tomorrow, June 9th, 2021. Thus, the wearing of a face mask shall be at the option of the student or parent. Seeing no more discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Yeah. Come on. Okay, now it is time for our public hearing. I would like to recess the School Board meeting and open up our public hearing. At this time, I would like to call the public hearing for June 8, 2021 to order. Our item tonight is Cypress Junction Montessori Charter Renewal Contract. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward to address this item on our public hearing agenda tonight? If so, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we shall proceed. Board members, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Cypress Junction Montessori Charter School Renewal Contract for five years. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing and reconvene the School Board meeting. The next item is our Superintendent's Report. Mr. Hill, do you have an update for us today?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, we have an update. Before I give the update, it was brought to my attention, Ms. Miller, that perhaps you wanted to say something during the new administrators?
I did. Some of our new principals that are being, that are being, putting their positions, whether they're acting or not, they were advised not to come this evening, or they haven't been in the past due to the COVID restrictions and the limited space. But I want to encourage, and I think the suggestion's been made, that we start in July and add these people back so they can bring their families. I worked with some of them who've worked in this district for decades, and I think it's an opportunity for them to thank the people that helped get them to their new position. So I just want to confirm that we'll be doing that in July.
Confirmed. I think that's a, that's a, that's a yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for mentioning that, because that is so important. I know I appreciated that opportunity when I was coming up through the ranks, and it's a big deal. So thank you for that. There will be a special board meeting for the tentative budget held on July 20, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. The next work session and board meeting will be held on July 27, 2021. The work session will begin at 12:30 p.m., and the board meeting will begin at 5:00 p.m. These meetings will be held at the Jim Miles Professional Development Center located at 5204 U.S. Highway 98 South in Lakeland. That concludes the Superintendent's Report this evening. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Next, we have our Attorney's Report, which will be given by Mr. Bridges.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Single item, a request authority to advertise a public hearing to be held on July 27, 2021 during the regularly scheduled board meeting for the Code of Conduct changes that were presented to the School Board at the last work session.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, ma'am.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the request to advertise the public hearing to be held on July 27, 2021 during the regularly scheduled board meeting for the Code of Conduct changes. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. The next item on our agenda is our Auditor's Report, but I don't believe we're having a report today. Is that correct? Okay, thank you, Ms. Matthews. Now we come to our Board Member Reports, and we'll start with Mr. Al, Dr. Allen. I'm going to eventually get that correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, if you get cold on this summer hot evening, you can run down the Mitchell's Coffee Shop and have a nice cup of coffee and enjoy an incredible art installation. Basically showcasing our senior high art instructors. I was there this morning. We had an event on Friday night, saw several board members there, I think. No, I saw a few people around downtown Lakeland on Friday night. Ms. Fortney, indeed, and Jaclyn Bird, or Superintendent Bird. I'd recommend the I Dream of Jeannie. Had a cup of that this morning there at Mitchell's as well. Definitely an opportunity to see some, some great art from our instructors, as they're the ones that are influencing our students with some beautiful craft. Secondly, you know, what is your story? We all have a story. We all have a unique story. Just wanted to say thanks to the Polk Education Foundation for an amazing Hall of Fame event. That was my first one in experiencing that. It was pretty humbling to hear the stories and the impact of individuals that came through and completed and graduated at Polk County Schools. And then that continuation of giving back and serving our community in, in great ways. And then finally, speaking of graduates, we all had the opportunity to, to celebrate our students, and I had a chance to attend the Harrison and Lakeland Senior High graduation ceremonies. And I have a little grad shout-out here. Just wanted to read this, and that will conclude my comments. Malia Williams is a visual arts student at Harrison School for the Arts. She comes from a single-parent household and worked very hard to become valedictorian and be accepted to Columbia University. Malia is civic-minded and has produced a five-track extended play on all major streaming platforms and created merchandise like t-shirts and stickers that read message to the youth, "Keep On Hoping." All proceeds from the merchandise sales are donated to the Loveland Foundation. If you don't know about that one, check it out. Researched it a little bit recently today, but it's a therapy fund for Black women. And she wants to do what she can to help her community. She's also Global Goals Ambassador for the UNA, USA. Her development goal is no poverty, and her tasks include creating blog posts about UN activity for the UNA, USA. Malia lists her experience at Harrison and the Art Department as having a great impact on her and helping her to explore her own interests, personality, and improving her communication through art. Malia feels that she has become more self-reflective and compassionate during her years at Harrison. She plans to major in sociology and visual arts and would like to attend law school after earning her bachelor's degree. Malia hopes to use her skill and knowledge working in the nonprofit sector, helping marginalized communities. So I think it's really cool to get the Hall of Fame at that higher level and, and then to, to actually see our students succeed at the RP Funding Center, and then to hear their story of what they're planning to do moving forward. So a pretty amazing experience this week. So congrats to our grads. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Allen. Ms. Fortney?
Oh, okay. Well, yes, I had some wonderful graduations. Mulberry High School, Bartow High School, Summerlin, IB, Fort Meade, George Jenkins. I made up for what I missed the year before. But the ones that really stand out, and everybody was wonderful, was Roosevelt Academy and how proud those kids were to accept those diplomas. And our Grad Academy, some of the stories there of the miracles that we do every day with kids. And of course, I have to give a shout-out to our Fresh Start. It allows so many kids the opportunity. Just the joy on their face when they walked across that stage. And, you know, some of the hateful things that we hear in the world today. If you would go to one of those graduations, it might soften your approach to what our goals are, which is students first. I want to reach out to all of our retirees. I know most of them, and bless their hearts, they have earned it. I'm, I'm pretty sure this year should have been counted in dog years toward retirement as far as time. I do want to do a shout-out to all the staff for making it the 2020, 2021. Especially our bus drivers and our food service who continue to work even when you think they're not. I have some, I'm going to take some time here, because Gauze Academy is also one of my high schools that graduated. And I asked them, since Ms. Miller was for sure that she had the most high schools. She is inaccurate. I do. But Gauze Academy is doing wonderful things. I really did get a chance to spend a lot of time with Ms. Bird that I've never gotten to spend. And I really enjoyed that. And when Gauze was our last one, so I have an actual picture of her last graduation. If anybody's interested, I'll sell it to you. But Gauze Academy, they are putting their final touches on stuff I can't even pronounce. It is some sort of conference, and, and it's a grant that they are gathering. They're basically creating maps of their data, and they're going to present in St. Louis, the story map for the GIS user group. And they're partnering with a group in Winter Haven. USF, I'm still at Gauze. All business students have worked on projects in conjunction with the Stavros Center at All kinds of awesome things they are doing. Business Achievement Awards, they had five students actually earn those honors at the business level. At the FBLA Leadership Conference, they placed fifth for a small school. That is awesome. They had the Signs of the Tiger, if you're not familiar. 61 Signs of the Tiger, which basically, they do traffic signs engraved, signage, et cetera. They're awesome. And the seniors, they had 20 seniors graduate this year, and they were so proud. And, and they graduated with their class. They also have middle, middle school programs, if you're interested. Let's move on to another one. This is from Fort Meade. Lord, I could read for days on Fort Meade, but because they are junior, senior. But I really want to just share this. Amy Hardy sent this. Oh, the places that you will go, this was all Fort Meade where they are going. Where's the camera? There it is. And their career paths or four-year university paths. George Jenkins, Mr. Patton, has done a wonderful job out there. Their academy has earned 356 industrial certifications, with approximately 120 students still planning to test. That's an amazing accomplishment. IB at Bartow, you talking about heads above the rest. I'm just going to give you some stats. 1920 diploma rate, IB diploma, not Polk County Schools diploma, 88 percent. Florida IB diploma rate is only 81 percent. U.S. Public Schools diploma rate is only 71 percent. That, and they are in a rigorous program. They had 46 AP Scholars, 13 AP Scholars with honor, 47 AP Scholars with distinction, and a national AP Scholar, they had four. They had five of the seven IB, from their IB school, National Merit finalists from Polk They had over 2 million scholarships earned, offered, to date. That was a month ago. Logan Duncan was here earlier from IB, getting his perfect attendance. And last but not least, nobody else sent me anything, but Mulberry High School, the best-kept secret in Polk County. They're kind of like Auburndale. Everybody supports that school. Everybody supports that school. And we had 17 graduates supported by the Title I migrant program facilitator Danny Higgins. I too have given out the food at RCMA. I'm actually going to go on a tour in a different district to go look at what they're doing over there to help with that generational poverty and try to figure out some solutions. They had kids graduate to go to Michigan State, Western Michigan, USF, Polk State, Travis Technical. They received $1.5 million in institution and scholarship awards. All but one of the 17 students are the first in their family to graduate from high school, and all will be first-generation college students. You can't put a number on that. And that concludes, thank you for that. And if I'd missed the high school or the whatever, you can send me something, and I'll read it the next time, not to be left out. I think that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Next, we have Ms. Sarah Beth Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to quickly highlight graduations in Hall of Fame. May is one of those months that just fills your cup, because you get to see all that we do and, and the great outcomes. You get to see the graduations, you get to see our Hall of Famers, so many different awards banquets for all of our students from kindergarten, our pre-K students, all the way through high school. And it's just one of the coolest months, I think, because I thoroughly enjoy going to all of those. But a couple other things I wanted to highlight is, this week is Youth Leadership Polk, so we have 14 students that are traveling the county with Polk Vision. I got to spend some time with them yesterday, and they are incredible. I met them at Haven Coffee Roasters in Winter Haven, and John, who, they opened their business on March 22nd, so they've been opened now for just a couple months. And man, they threw some curveball questions at him that I think he was, you know, expecting, okay, what, you know, how, how hard can it really be? They're high schoolers. But they had great questions about entrepreneurship, starting their own businesses, some of his challenges and obstacles, things that he wished he had done differently. They got to sample some of his coffees. I know you were talking about some of the Mitchell's coffees. They got to taste a unicorn latte, which I still am not 100% sure what all is in it, and their new Cookies and Cream Cold Brew. And just talk a little bit about how that's one of the exciting things about having your own business, is that you can do cool things. I taught their lesson afterwards through Junior Achievement, and it just kept coming back. They would say, oh, but, but John at Haven told us this, and like, this is why they should do that in this situation for their JA lesson. So I was very impressed with them and enthralled for all they're going to get to explore in Polk County this week. And then finally, I just want to highlight our payroll department. As most of you know, in the month of May, we had a lot going on in payroll. We, on May 11th, when we met, authorized new MOUs, bonuses for teachers, the blending learning stipends were finalized. And so payroll had about 10 days to process all of this. So I asked Ms. Torres for some numbers. That was 5,698 bonuses, 6,845 teacher raises, 1,690 blended learning stipends, and they did it all in less than two weeks. So I just want to give a huge shout-out and thank you to the payroll team. And that includes the programming team, Mike Jones and Diane Rivera. And then the rest of the payroll team for the late nights, early mornings, and weekends, Paula Dole, Michelle Dill, Sharitha Arrington, Mariah Flores, Joan Brooks, Tara McDowell, James Fout, and of course, Ms. Dana Torres. So thank you for all of your hard work. I know that our staff truly appreciates all that you did to make sure that money appeared in their May paychecks. So thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Next, we have Ms. Fields.
I just have a couple of things, because it's been a long day, and I'm sure that everyone's tired. But I wanted to, to name the four gentlemen that was inducted into the Hall of Fame. I don't think anyone did that. That would be Mr. Robert Trone, Ozmar Woodard, Dick Mullinex, many of us worked with him when he was on our school board, and Howard Wiggs. And I want to commend the staff for doing a great job with the program. Everything was very nice and, and very, I think, very upbeat. And when you check your email, you can see the link to the photos that are very nice of the, of the evening's event. And also, you can also go to the Hall of Fame page on our website and see the pictures as well. And I wanted to just say to Ms. Tammy Crest, she's one of our administrators, and to our family, that we send our prayers and our condolences during the loss of her husband, Coach Greg Crest. I'm sure that many of you all know him. He was an educator, he was a coach at Kathleen High School and the Aviation Academy, a gentle giant, a great man, and he really loved what he did, which was taking care of our kids as well as in the sports area. So we want to continue to pray for that family. We've lost a couple of people for the last few months at Kathleen High School, so we need to be lifting up. so we need to be lifting up Kathleen High School as well. And I wanted to take this moment to again thank Superintendent Byrd. She was at our last board meeting, and that was actually her last meeting. I don't think some of us knew that. And I want to make sure that I let Superintendent Byrd know how much of an impact she has had on our school district and the amazing job that she's done for our students and our employees. And I think it's very telling that, I think she went to all of the graduations, Mr. Hill, I believe, every one of them. I don't know how she did that. Yeah, I don't know how she did that. That's a heavy lift. But she wanted to do that as she exits the arena. But she's going to be around. We look forward to seeing her in the very near future. But well done, Superintendent Byrd. You'll be missed, and we hope and pray that you will enjoy your retirement. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unicorn latte.
It is very delicious.
I'm pretty sure there's enough, I'm pretty sure there's enough sugar in that to turn you into a unicorn. But I just want to say welcome and thank you to Superintendent Hyde for being here. When is your first official day?
July first.
And yet you are here. Thank you. I think that's indicative of Mr. Hyde's commitment and dedication to Polk County, to our school district. So again, just want to say welcome and thank you for being here today. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I'll try to make this brief. Yes, graduations, if you can attend those, you can see why any of us are dedicated to this. There's something about being amongst the community and sending kids out into the world to do really anything they want. So I, those are my favorite things to do in the year. And I want to mention one school that doesn't get a lot, but of attention because of who they educate. But we also, we educate everyone in Polk County. We educate children in juvenile justice system. We educate children who have to be on stretchers and feeding tubes. We educate everyone. We also educate adults. And one of my favorite graduations is the East Area Adult School. And the speaker for the last graduation was a graduate. His name was Steve Gardner. Steve graduated, I'm sorry, he dropped out of high school in nineteen seventy-three. And one day, he was driving through Auburndale, and he saw the sign for the adult school, and he decided to return. He returned to get his high school diploma. And he told us every morning, he has coffee and talks to his wife, who passed away in 2016. And the next day, he was going to wake up and pour the cup of coffee to tell her he was the class of 2021. And I think those stories are what's motivating and really encouraging for what we do here and what we fight for funding for, and for every student, the elder student or the pre-K student. The East Area Adult School is ran by someone who I think is an amazing leader. And Dr. DeCostilia Danielle was just appointed to the District Ten Board Member for the Adult and Community Educators of Florida. So that's a great honor for her to have, and the fact that we have her here in Polk County representing adult education. So I thought that was an exciting time. And there's two students that I want to mention. I'm a Kiwanis member, and we gave away some scholarships. And two that came from the Central Florida Aerospace Academy, I wanted to point out just for their stories. There's a young man named Aaron, I'm going to mess up his last name, it's Yeechi, I think. His family was from New Jersey, and he was interested in aviation. And they didn't have anything available for them in New Jersey. His whole family, his parents, picked up and moved to Lakeland so their child could go to the Central Florida Aerospace Academy and be educated in Polk County. He is doing amazing things. His dad died in December of COVID-19. So he moved here to get his son the most opportunities he could get. And Aaron and his family lost his father. But Aaron is moving on to go into college. I mean, to listen to him speak, he, I mean, he's years beyond as far as impressive in his skill set. I can't wait to see where he goes and ends up. And another one is Jenny Minam. Jenny has only been in this country for seven years. She's from Thailand, she spoke no English. She is graduating at the top of her class and going into the study of human psychology to understand how to make aviation safer for the public. This is what Polk County produces, and I'm so proud to be a part of it. These kids are amazing, they impress me every day. So thank you, Madam Chair. I think we've all been inspired here at the end with our graduations to keep going. So thanks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. And I have a few items as well. Once again, Superintendent Hyde, we welcome you to Polk County Public Schools. We're so excited for your leadership, your vision, and the experience that you bring to our district. And I for one, look forward to working with you as we chart the course for moving our district to the next level. So welcome aboard. Graduations, I was able to attend Haint City High School, Harrison School for the Arts, and Ridge Community High School. And as everyone have said, I mean, it's amazing to be able to see these kids, kids that we've known since they were little, culminate with the graduation across the stage. And I felt so blessed that we could do it in a normal setting this year and give these kids the right that they deserve to walk across that stage, get their diploma, and get their pictures taken and celebrate with their friends and family. So kudos to all the graduates of the class of 2021. Something that I'm passionate about is reading. And so I always encourage parents to encourage your children to read a variety of books over the summer, both fiction and nonfiction. It's the single most important thing that a family can do to keep learning alive over the summer months and also to prevent what I call learning loss. So remember, readers are leaders. And it has been quite a challenging school year for everyone. I would like to express my heartfelt thank you to all of our absolutely incredible employees, our terminal operators, our secretaries, teachers, paraeducators, bus drivers, media center specialists, coaches, cafeteria staff, psychologists, mental health professionals, nurses, custodians, school counselors, school deans, testing administrators, maintenance staff, groundskeepers, school resource officers, and school administrators. Additionally, our district staff have worked incredibly hard to support student learning. My sincere thanks goes out to our dedicated staff in the following divisions and departments. Academic Competitions, Architectural Services, Assessment, Accountability, and Evaluation, Athletics, Business Process Support, Business Services Division, Career Technical, Adult and Multiple Pathways, Charter Schools, Computer Networking, Construction Services, Custodial Services, Discipline, Driver's Education, Electronic Equipment Repair and Support, Labor and Employee Relations, Energy Management, English for Speakers of Other Languages, Environmental and Safety Services, Equity and Diversity Management, Exceptional Student Education, Facilities and Operations Division, Facilities Planning, Federal Programs and Grants Management, Finance, Fine Arts, Fiddlers, Hearth Project, Human Resource Services Division, Information Services, Information Systems and Technology Division, Information Tech, Software Development, Juvenile Justice Programs, K-12 Curriculum, Learning Support Division, Legislative Affairs, Maintenance Services, Library Media Services, Office of Acceleration and Innovation, Office of the Deputy Superintendent, Office of the Superintendent, Payroll, Personnel, Physical Education, Polk Education Foundation, Preschool Programs, Procurement, Professional Development, Public Relations and Strategic Partnerships. I think they're happy. Pupil Accounting, Purchasing, Recruitment and Educator Quality, Regional Superintendents, Risk Management, Safe Schools, School Counseling Services, School Nutrition, School Technology Services, Student Services, Support Services, System Networking and Operations, Teaching and Learning Services, Tech Support Center, Transportation Operations, Vehicle Services and Safety, Warehouses, and last but not least, Wellness. Through it all, you have remained diligent, flexible, resilient, kind, compassionate, and focused to provide the best education to our students and support for our families. To that end, I am so grateful to each and every one of you for all you have done this crazy school year. I hope you are able to rest, relax, and recharge during the summer months ahead. Thank you so much. And that concludes my report. The next item on our agenda is public comments addressing items not on the agenda. I have a list of folks that have signed up to speak, so please come forward as I call your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. I will start with Tim Williams.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Williams, and I live at 247 Santa Rosa Drive here in Winter Haven. I moved here to Polk County when I was twelve years old. I graduated from Haint City High School, I was a Hornet. I have also been a business owner here in Polk County for the last thirty-one years. My wife, she graduated from Winter Haven High School, and she is an ESE schoolteacher here in the Polk County School System, and now works at Haint City High. She's been here thirty-two years. And she's got three more years to go, and I keep telling her, don't stop till you drop. Two years ago, I began a research, to do a research on the smartphone and the capabilities of it. And I've seen where Mr. Hyde had mentioned some of the safety programs that we've got in our system, which is awesome. But my research is showing me a little bit more of a concern, and that is, the current phones that are being purchased have a capability to allow them to go anywhere they want to in the world and allow them to see pornography in its most graphic form. And these phones do not come with the parental control in the on position. They don't come with the, it boggles my mind, but it does not come in the on position. So I've agreed to donate my time to the Polk County Sheriff's Office as the project coordinator for a program called Parental, or Parents Take Control Campaign. You may have seen some of the billboards, you may have seen some of the television commercials, you may have seen some of the newspaper articles. We've raised over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with community money to bring education to the importance and the significance of setting the parental control in place. I work directly under Polk County Sheriff's Office Director of Communications, Scott Wilder, and the efforts of this campaign are to educate and equip parents with the necessary tools they need to keep their kids safe from harmful materials found on the internet. Through my research, I've discovered that sixty percent of boys and twenty-five percent of girls ages ten to seventeen view internet pornography, which includes violent pornography, rape, and even child molestation. This is available to us, with on three to four clicks of the internet browser, our kids can view thousands of pornographic videos from around the world. Dr. Cooper, a forensic pediatric psychologist, states, viewers of such material are twenty-four times more likely to commit a sexual, violent sexual act, experience depression, feel isolated, act aggressively towards women, and even commit suicide. And I know that the Polk County School Board, or School Districts, have a filter. Is that, is that over? Can I just say this? I've waited a long time to just share this with you. I know that you guys have a filter on your school campuses, and that filter works really good. However, the new cell phones are allowed to, they can do it without internet. They have all the unlimited data, so they can go up and down the hallways viewing this graphic illicit pornography. And I'm asking that you would partner with us and the Polk County Sheriff's Office in an effort to educate our parents so that they can fight for their kids. Because right now, I don't really truly think that they understand the significance of what they're fighting. I really don't. Statistics show, and this is, I'm going to pull this, Pediatric College of America tells us that they did a study on one thousand parents. They asked one thousand parents, do you know where the parental control is on your phone? They didn't, eighty-four percent of them didn't know where the parental control was, didn't know how to set it, and ninety percent of them said, I trust my kid. The problem with it is, is most parents haven't seen the graphic nature of this explicit material. And therefore, the school board has the ability to put in front of the parents' eyes the significance of this, that the Polk County Sheriff, Grady Judd, is backing. So I'm asking for your help. And maybe there's a scrambler or an algorithm way to filter beyond Wi-Fi that would allow us to scramble the internet waves that would be harmful to our kids. But I'm telling you, it's happening right here in our county. And thank you so much for listening to me. I work two to three hours a day, seven days a week, on this. That's all I do, is study and learn. I have put together packets, I've got
Thank you.
And if you would like one, I would be more than happy to give it to you. It's a lot of information, but it's so well worth your time.
If you can just leave the packets with Ms. Linda there.
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll raise your hand.
Thank you again so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know how you guys do this. I don't have, I don't have to.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Burke? Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys tonight?
So far, so good.
So far, so good.
So far, so good.
My name's Lisa Burke, I'm the president of Ask Me Local 2227. I live at 3100 Fast Trot Trail, Lake Wells, Florida. I wanted to talk to you tonight, some comments were made about talking to Ask Me employees. I want to make sure that moving forward, that we have, we have lots of employees behind the scenes, as you know. Make sure you talk to them, because they have ideas, choices, and everything, and especially decisions that are made. Our work conditions are completely different than the majority of Polk County School Board employees. We're not in rooms, our environments are different. As mentioned earlier, I would like for you guys to go through the list and look to see on the non-instructional, see how many we're losing. We shouldn't be losing that many. We need to invest in the current employees that we have, because the situation's coming up, as I mentioned before, in September. But because those employees are mainly, a couple of them retired, they would still be here. But because of money and everything else, they don't want to deal with the hassle with COVID and all those other things that happened all this year, because they're getting older. But mainly, when a ten-year employee, a ten-year bus driver, is earning what a brand-new employee makes, and that is going on right now, that's not right. So invest in the employees that we have, because I guarantee you, we could get a lot of people in here to do that. And I wanted to talk to you, because what would happen if everybody did leave? I mean, as I've stated, custodians, it is the busiest time of the year for custodians. I mean, as I've stated, custodians, it is the busiest time of the year for custodians, painters, and roofers. They work the hardest, they're working five days a week this summer. We've all gotten spoiled, we all enjoyed those four days, but due to COVID, things happen, and they have to work because that's their contract. But let's try to do something for them. Make sure they get recognized. Thank them, and go out and talk to those people. Pay them some money, because raises, we've not had a raise in three years, honestly. The last offer we had was a bonus, but we said no. Why a $300 bonus? Because you wanted to raise the insurance. We know we have insurance committee coming up, we know that's on the discussions, so we need to think about those things. Because all those employees, I'm sorry, I don't have a whole lot today, but they work so hard, stripping the floors, moving furniture, moving the books for the teachers that they need to get rid of at the end of the year, all the teachers' furnitures. You know, a lot of them hurt their shoulders, they have problems working, because they do the hardest work. You have your painters, your roofers, everything, your plumbers fixing the things that need to be fixed when you want to fix. So, thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you so much for speaking up. Okay, the next order of business is adjournment. Board members, there being no further business, this meeting of the Polk County School Board is now adjourned.